Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the regular meeting of the County Dyken Board of Health. For Thursday, April 14, 2022. We are in Old Town Hall, 1111 Somerset Avenue. This is a public meeting being recorded for cable broadcast and internet posting on www.dyken-mass.gov and YouTube. So we'll now call the meeting to order. And if everyone wouldn't mind joining me in the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. 6:04, we'll open our public hearing that, at this point, this is agenda writing number three, six o'clock PM, public hearing for our proposed body art regulations. Is there anybody here wanting to speak to or for or against any of the regulations that we set forth?
I would just say, we did have one body art establishment in town, but apparently a month ago, they have moved out of town. So at this point in time, we have no body art establishments in town.
Yeah, as far as the regulations go, there were just a few minor changes or additions to the state body art regulations what they put forth. So if there's no one to speak, would you like to speak to it at all, Kevin?
No, I guess the only thing I'd like to say is, it was, we put it in the paper and we posted it as a meeting, a public hearing. So people had the opportunity to come in if they wanted to.
And these regulations were based on what town?
Lakeville, I believe.
So they were tailored to the ones that we had in Lakeville. We changed things that we thought were, would meet standards in Dyken.
You're absolutely right. They were advertised and everybody had an opportunity to come in. Barbara, do you'd like to say anything?
No, I agree. If they're not here anymore.
Okay, Mrs. Mello, you all set? As far as being, you're good? Okay. Then if there's no discussion, I would, at this point, entertain a motion to accept the proposed body art body art regulations as drafted or written.
Do you think we need to close the public hearing first?
I think you have to close the hearing then for discussion with the board.
Okay, then we'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. Okay, motions made by Kevin Bernado, seconded by Mrs. Katavia to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we've closed the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve or we adopt the regulations regarding body art. Is there a specific name for it? Body art regulations for Dyken Mass.
I second that motion.
Motion's made by Mr. Bernado, seconded by Mrs. Katavia to adopt the proposed body art regulations. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
I also am an aye, it was unanimous. Thank you, everyone. We have a few minutes before the 6:15 for the proposed septic regulations.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Ferry has some words he'd like to say to the board and he has another meeting to get to. So if we could take public input out of order.
Sure, absolutely.
Point of order, real quick, I'm sorry, Tom. We would have to open up this meeting, close it, then go into the public hearing again. Because we're not, right now, we're not in a body art meeting.
Well, I did call it to order, I think we're okay with that, I think. The only thing I would need is...
The meeting's staying open, it's just the other one.
Okay, yeah, all right, perfect.
There's a motion to take public input out of order.
Sorry.
Number seven.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second to take item number seven, public input out of order. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries, Mr. Ferry.
Good evening. So, as you know, a few things been happening in town this week. So I figured I'd make myself available so we can discuss some matters. They're not on your agenda, so I don't believe you can act on them, but want to make sure we're all on the same page. In particular, the transfer station attendant has resigned from that position. So I have since then spoken with John Lawrence, our assistant. You guys already have him in place. He's willing to take care of the Saturdays. At the meantime, I only talked to him during his lunch break. I've not had a lengthy conversation with him. He's not available for the Tuesdays. So, tentatively, right now, if you guys are okay, my department will cover the Tuesday mornings until we can discuss this further. And I'll have a good, healthy conversation with John, make sure he's okay with Saturdays or how long that's going to last.
Okay.
Unless you guys have other ideas at this point.
No, this is what, I just found out this evening that, what had happened. And that's why I was hopeful that your crew could cover Tuesdays, the two-hour stretch on Tuesdays, which I don't know how you feel about that going on long-term. I know they're, you know, on your payroll and not ours and you have, springtime's a lot to do. It's a discussion for another day.
As we've said before, it is what it is.
Yeah, okay.
So it needs to be on your future agenda, at least to...
I would say just...
So you guys can stay on top of it, you know?
You just handle the emergency as it is until we figure something out and then we'll have it on our meeting.
Right.
Yeah, John Lawrence has been trained, so he's capable of doing it on Saturdays, available, so.
So after the food bank, so I leave here about nine, I'll go up there and see how he's making out Saturday and...
Okay, that would be nice.
And at least making sure he's all set and what to do with the invoices, all that stuff.
I may stop by, too.
Right, that'd be good.
All right.
Does he have, does he have a key?
Yes.
I have to go to the transfer station myself, but I'll just be high and stuff.
Yeah, so I'll be there just after nine. So if one of you is going to be before that or after that, that'd be great.
He should be okay, I mean, it's not that. I don't see a problem. I think he did okay training, so.
Okay, is there anything else?
Well, thank you, no, I don't, I don't think so. Well, it's not on here, but we're still, down the road, we're going to be talking about mattresses and acceptance, so, and what we're going to be doing.
Not necessarily a comfortable conversation, but...
No.
There's another that I'm going to bring up to our agents' report, but the pink bag program is also changing. And so that may affect how we do things, too, with the DPW staff and the transfer station. So maybe at the next meeting, we should be dragging him back here to further the discussions.
Can't get somebody to come to a meeting when you say drag them in.
No.
We'll invite them in.
Yeah, so I just need to be prepared on, for the conversation.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, we do have a Earth Day cleanup in progress, similar to last year's. There's no one really leading it up. I am handing out bags like I did last year, just construction bags where people can use their own. Let me know where and when to pick them up.
The bags were donated, correct, I think, as...
No, I pick them up.
Yeah, but they don't cost any town anything, do they?
They're just regular construction trash bags.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
I thought one year we got hazmat bags or something.
We have two cases from another town for their curbside pickup that we were told to keep. We're not using that yet.
Yeah, oh, they would work, too.
It's a thinner plastic, that's why I'm not using it. The construction bags work better. So, just, just so you know, South Dyken from 138 East has already been done, already been picked up. Several other areas already done. There's two other groups doing stuff this coming Saturday. They believe that's through the PTO, Facebook stuff, you can follow that. But the same deal, they just text me when to pick it up and it's been working out well. And you can notice that town's always been fairly clean, so.
Yeah, I see a lot of stuff out there now.
So it's going to be an ongoing, at least for the month of April. Also, Hall and Mr. Borg just offered, he questioned why he saw the bags, not-in-town bags, and he offered to pick them up on his travels, too, so he's helping. And we didn't ask him to do that, so that's very nice of him to do that.
That's why we've had them for 45 years.
Okay, so if there's nothing else?
No, I think that's it.
Have you seen you guys?
Thank you, Tom.
Too, thank you. We got a couple of minutes. I think I'm going to move on to item 5A. We will discuss an act tastefully simple temporary food permit fee waiver request.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to recuse myself from 5A.
Oh, yeah, food, okay.
All right, so there's a craft fair coming to town and tastefully simple. The woman is selling prepackaged stuff. She doesn't prepare any of it. It's just, it's boxes of stuff and jars and whatever. I don't know if everybody's familiar with it. But because she doesn't actually do any food preparation, she's just doing food retail. She was asking if the board would consider reducing the fee to $10 for the temporary food permit. It's an event that I'm going to be at for other stuff. You know, there's other food vendors that are going to be there, so. We did it last year for this vendor.
Well, this says fee waiver request, are we just going to vote on a reduced fee here? Okay, of $10.
That's what she's asking. I mean, the board can come up with anything you want, but that's what she's asking.
Yeah, I did the inspection there last year and saw what she was selling and it was all prepackaged stuff, so.
But she needs a permit, so.
Yeah, all right. Is there a motion to grant tastefully simple a reduce fee permit of $10?
I make a motion to accept the reduced fee.
Second, Kevin?
I recuse myself.
Oh, that's right, I'll have to step down in a second. All right, I will step down in a second to motion. Motion's made in second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Mrs. Katavia, aye, and I am also an aye. So number 5A is closed. And at 6:15, we'll now open a public hearing for our proposed septic regulations.
So the board, we worked in workshop, we went through a lot of these. So we kind of worked them out amongst ourselves. We posted it in the newspaper. We emailed or mailed it to every Title V inspector, installer, and engineer who works in town regularly or has licenses. And everyone we talked to basically wasn't too concerned with what was here. I did get one phone call from one person that asked what time the meeting was because they were planning on coming down. Her question was about the well test one, but she didn't explain the question. She said she was coming down, so.
You said it was at 6:15?
Well, it was good that you, everybody got notified that is involved with this.
Well, it's easier that way than dealing with it afterwards when people...
Well, yeah, I mean, we had a meeting, they didn't show up. You know, what can we say, so.
And even if they come back and they ask the question, you could just elaborate or try to figure out what they're, what they're looking for for the answer, so.
Anybody else want to comment?
I'd say the only thing is, if we know she's coming, Ross is texting her now to see if she's on her way because if she has input, I'd rather hear it. So just, if you can just wait one second.
I don't know if Jim had anything with the...
Oh, yeah, Title V rights.
Oh, I, you have a copy of it?
Yeah, did you have a comment?
The proposed ones we were working on?
Yeah. I just wanted to refresh your app, I really, since the last time.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you? Good to see you.
Yeah, good to meet you. I have no idea. Over here. Thank you. You're welcome.
So the regulations are being proposed. Most of them are, like, say, cleanup stuff. I don't want to call them loopholes, but stuff that, as time has gone on, we've recognized some issues that we need to, to close off. These are not meant to be anti-development or anything like that. They're just meant to avoid problems that we've been having. The last time we revised our regs was July of 2019, so it's been a few years, so. Always looking to improve ourselves.
And now that COVID is almost behind us, maybe we can finally start making some progress.
Yeah, Nicole has been a major help in keeping COVID behind us so that we can work on other stuff, so.
Just have one question.
Sure.
So, just for clarification on the third one, Mr. Pilling? I'll give you a second to read it before I ask the question.
Yep.
So I agree, I think it's a good idea. We actually had a few wells come back with arsenic in town. So the only clarification would be you specify that requires certificate compliance. Is that also for component repairs?
The way we wrote it was for certificate of compliances, so that would imply any time you need a permit. So if you want to replace a distribution box, you would need a well test, whether that was what our intention was when we did this or not, but that's the way it reads.
So that's my only concern. It's only my only concern.
Doesn't say, you don't say, like, minor repairs, like a D-box or something?
Not that we don't want to identify problems, but it just, it seems a little cumbersome for just a component repair. But of course, it's at the will of the board. I don't know what you're trying to ascertain.
I mean, technically, the issue is if they're going to replace the D-box, but they're drinking E. coli in their well, should they be moving the septic system instead of just replacing it?
Well, I think it covers it, it says here, you're talking about any Title V inspection or disposal works construction, right? That requires a certificate of compliance. So regardless of you going to do a minor repair, it's going to need a certificate of compliance. So it pretty much covers, it's like a catch-all. But the question is, you're right, do we want to have somebody do a water test? For a well, I would think the person would want to know.
Yeah, and, I mean, from a public health perspective, yes. I'm just saying that you might see some pushback for that, so I just want to make sure you...
And I've actually, I'm not going to say where, but there was one individual where they did the repair and the level of arsenic was so high and he was so thankful that we found it.
Yeah, 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 I'm not saying it's not warranted. I just want to make sure we have our, our basis for it if we get any pushback for someone who does a D-box repair or something like that, or a pipe repair.
What's the cost of testing the water?
The cost isn't the problem. The test, the cost is probably $300. But if you come back with contaminants, that's the issue.
But it's better to know than not know.
It would be, yes.
Especially who resides in the home and stuff. Because they can't, some people can't...
I would lean toward doing the tests because a lot of people don't test their wells regularly. So I think we may be on solid ground with that, doing that, so.
Yeah, that's a good point, though.
Okay.
No matter what we do, we'll get pushback anyways. Yeah, no, that was a good comment. And I know I don't test my well frequently enough, and...
When sewer is available, do most people tie in?
Most do, yes. Not, not all, but yes, most of them do.
So now they will have to.
Well, that's only if it fails.
It's a failure, no, I know.
If they need to do a component.
Correct.
Mm-hmm, that's not it.
I would say, no way, it's going to be easier to put in a D-box than...
But if it's a total failure.
Right.
So those workshops, we're, they help. We got to talk it out.
Definitely.
We spent a few hours on that, so.
Well, we don't have a response, she didn't respond to the text.
Okay, is there any other comments, discussion, or anything? Well, if there's none, then we'll accept a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
I second.
Okay, motion made in second to close the public hearing. All's in favor?
Aye.
I, I...
I'll oppose, okay, that motion carries, public hearing is closed. Now, is there a motion to adopt the proposed septic regulations?
I propose to accept the new regula...
Adopt?
Adopt the regulation changes of 2022.
Second that.
Okay, motion made in second to adopt the proposed, new proposed septic regulations. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All's opposed, the motion carries. All right. The next item was put off from last meeting, so we give everybody a chance to catch up on everything. This was a regulation that we acted on in February 2020.
You skipped Papa Squash B.
Say what?
You skipped B.
That's what I'm talking about. Board of Health regulations dated 2/12/20...
No, the one above it, Papa Squash Craft Fair.
Right above it, Tom.
Do you have the right agenda?
I don't have it on my...
Oh, you printed out that agenda, we added that in, they...
All right, let's do that, then. Oh, I printed this out, yeah.
Yeah, that was added in at the last minute.
All right, let's do 3B, then. We will discuss an act Papa Squash Craft Fair Temporary Food Permit Fee Waiver Request.
Mr. Chairman, I have to recuse myself from 5A.
Again, okay? So what are they doing over there at Papa Squash?
So Papa Squash Pool, that's over on Horton Street, they are having a fundraiser to raise money. And they're having a craft fair behind Town Hall here. And they are looking to serve food. And because it's a fundraiser for a nonprofit, they are asking for the fee to be waived. That's the $35 permit fee. Any other vendors that show up at the event still need a permit, but this is for the food they're going to prepare.
So that being said, is, is there a motion?
I make a motion to waive the fee for Papa Squash.
Okay, I'll step, excuse me, I'll step down second to motion to waive the fee. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Mrs. Katavia, an aye, and I will also vote aye to waive the permit fee for Papa Squash food permit. That motion carries then. Okay, moving on to C now. Amendments to Board of Health Regulation dated 2/12/20 on Title Unlicensed Vaccinated Dogs Would Reference Notification Letters. That's the new one, do you have the old ones, please?
You should have the packet there.
I've got new ones. Did you copy the old ones?
Oh, no.
The three pages?
This, I think, is the new one.
Yeah, that's the old ones.
You can tell that from over there.
I was going to say, what you gave me tonight to copy, that's what everybody has a copy of. It's the three pages that you...
I believe, I believe that's the old ones, let me see.
...regulations on license and unvaccinated dogs and... Oh, Jim, do you have these?
No, that's the new ones. I gave her the old ones, I think. All right, so what are you passing out, let me see?
No, no, we already have it. It should already be, you have it in your packet already. No, this I thought was...
So this is all I have, the three pages, this.
Is it, does this, what you gave me, you have this as well?
One from July 2020 was the old one.
Oh, you did pull that out, didn't you?
Yes.
This one says amended.
That's the regulation.
That's the new one. If it doesn't...
I've got the new, I've got 2020.
Let me see what you got.
Yeah, that's, that's the old one.
What's this one, this is February.
Yeah, this is the old one, you got these?
Yeah, everybody's got it in the packet.
Okay, then that's what I'm talking about. I passed out the new ones.
Right, Ross passed out the old ones before he sat down, so, yeah.
Anybody need some more new ones, those were the old ones.
Yeah, I do, Tom.
I gave it to you, right? It's right there.
Which one, oh, this one right here?
Yeah.
All right, so this one is...
Here's the, here's some of the new ones.
The one with the yellow on it's the new one. The one without yellow is the old one.
The yellow, yes.
And if you look at the very bottom of the page, you'll see a date. The July 2020 is the original one, isn't it?
All right.
I've got February 12, 2020.
But it's in yellow, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, the one without yellow on it.
Okay, that's the July one.
I don't have the old one.
All right, the one with the yellow is the new version that came out of our workshop with the five or six people that were working on the general regulations and procedures and policies and so forth. So on the regulation, it says on licensed, unvaccinated dogs. On the one that's highlighted in yellow is the first change under B violations. You'll note that it says, the correction is Chapter 40, Section 21D. That had to be corrected because on the old one, it said Chapter 140, Section 21D, and there was no such reference to that in Mass General Law. It was actually Chapter 40, Section 21D. The next correction on the regulation page, or the next amendment, rather, is enforcement. And the new amended version will be, enforcement of this regulation shall be by the animal control officer under the direction of the town clerk's office. Those are the only two changes on that page. And we're doing that because it is no longer under the Board of Health. We decided that everything will go through the animal control or town clerk's office. So that's who will be the enforcing authority on that, not the Board of Health. Okay, on the next page, it says dog license renewal. There's only a couple of changes on here. The first being about four paragraphs down. I believe we left out the word Wednesday, 7:30 to 5:30 on the old form. So we added Wednesday in there to bring it up to where it should be. And as far as the signatory on the document, we changed that from Todd Pilling to Mark Pacico, Dyton Town Clerk. Those are the only minor changes on that one. And finally, on the last page, it's kennel license renewal. We took the responsibility from the Board of Health Office and rested it with the town clerk's office. And down at the bottom, we changed from Todd Pilling, Board of Health, to Mark Pacico, Town Clerk. Now, I don't have a copy of the other one, the old one, for the big paragraph, if somebody wouldn't mind reading the way it was. Which didn't make any sense after we reviewed it in committee.
It says, "In order to avoid the development of disease, you have 10 days from day of receipt of this letter to provide the town clerk a proper way of vaccinations and licenses for all your dogs as well as a kennel license to have if you have four or more dogs." We took it out because it said they had to have the license and the kennel license, and they wouldn't have it yet.
They wouldn't have had it already, so it was what we had written in the first place, back when we first adopted it. It really didn't make any sense. So the new, the new amended version pretty much says the same thing, but now it makes sense. You know, the procedure and protocol to go forward with it. If everybody's read it, then that's all there is. Basically, what we're doing here is taking the authority from the Board of Health and handing it over to Animal Control and Town Clerk.
I had one question.
Sure.
So where it says effective date, you can say this regulation shall take effect February 12, 2020, and the changes were made on this date.
Well, we're gonna have to put in the bottom amended on such a day. And I realize this has to go on either our letterhead and probably the letters for dog license renewal and kennel license renewal will have to be on Town Clerk letterhead and not our own letterhead. But that's all gonna get straightened out. We're just working on the text right now to see if we're all okay with it. So very minor changes, taking the, putting it now since the Animal Control reports to directly to Police Department and Town Clerk, who is the licensing authority. We felt that was the best place to be. And just for the record, the people at the, that were in this workshop, we met, I think, three times. We probably spent about five or six hours, plus two years before this, trying to get this done. And it was Chief McDonald, Lieutenant Cronin, Stacy Ferry, Animal Control, Jim Agar, zoning, and myself, Representative Board of Health, and Todd Pilling sat in on the end. So we would have a handle on some of this, so. So we had good meetings and some compromises were made that wasn't, you know, but at times you have to compromise to get some stuff done. So if there's no questions or concerns, I would accept a motion at this time to adopt the amended regulation effective today with the accompanying letters of dog license renewal and kennel license renewal. The reason these letters are in there is because they were referenced within the regulation. So, so that being said, is there a motion to adopt the amended version?
Do you wanna see if anybody in the audience has anything they wanna say?
Anybody have anything to say?
Just checking.
No, that was nice.
That's what I was gonna ask, if Stacy had anything. You were fine with this? Okay, that's what I wanted to ask.
Yeah, we spent, we spent some time. I think it came out very good. I think, I think we met the middle on this, and I think everybody will be at least pretty satisfied with what we came up with. And we just hope that we can get it by town meeting now. This all should be squared away, I hope, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion to accept the changes to the regulation for today in Board of Health, unlicensed and unvaccinated dogs.
I second that.
Effective immediately, at this meeting, or?
Yes, effective today.
Today, okay.
I second that.
Whatever today is, okay. It's, all right. Is there any further discussion? Motion's been made in seconded. Seeing none, alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I will also aye, because I'm very pleased to see this out of the way and Mr. Agar and some of us who've spent quite a few hours on this, but we'll see where it goes. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Yes, thank you.
Well, review, discuss, act, M D A R. That is the Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, 'cause somebody could be watching for our acronyms this evening. So nomination of animal inspector. I don't have any paperwork on that, but we did have paperwork that came up. Stacy Ferry, presently our animal control officer, and I mean our animal inspector, and has been our animal inspector now for, what, 12 years? More or less. This one, this was, is appointed by state. We make a recommendation. So is there a recommendation to nominate Mrs. Stacy Ferry as Inspector of Animals, Town or Dyton?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion made in seconded to nominate Mrs. Ferry, Inspector of Animals. Any further discussion? Yes?
We wanna know if she wants to.
She has to take it. No, do you want?
Alls in favor?
Aye.
All right, I'll also aye that one. Thank you.
I didn't see that he signed the previous one. It was only if there was a change. She was the nominating authority?
Tom, I'm not sure if you see that for the septic.
Might have been for the septic.
We'll have to revisit it.
Well, we moved on with it. You might have a question. I'll take it. Tony, did you come for the septic stuff? You have a question? We already went by it, but if you have a question about it, we can, we've already discussed it and closed it and adopted it. You're good?
Yeah, he's got questions.
He has questions.
Okay. We'll take it.
Do you want him coming up to the podium, or?
Yeah, we'd be better, I think, so we could hear him.
I got a question about this. If a piece of property has been perked, and after 10 years, you have to do a deep hole observation? Why? Why you have to have a deep hole observation?
Well, to evaluate if the water table's changed. It's been 10 years. It's not a new perk test. It's just a deep hole.
And I, from my experience in the past, you just wanna verify what they previously saw. Things, things have changed. You could have, you know, from going from one hole, 20 feet later, there's, the hole's different.
The only way it changes is by the season.
That's, that's one way, but it's also, I've seen, I've been on one property where one hole looks different from.
Yeah, but if it's been perked, it's been done by a, an engineer. It's gonna be, it was witnessed. Why you have to dig another hole? I don't understand that, because in my, in my experience, although I have never seen water tables change, that's what you do a soil test for. That's what you get, an evaluation.
I've seen variations.
Yeah, from hole to hole, but I mean, it's all logged. Everybody, if he's witnessing the perk, he has a copy of the log. He's seen it. What's gonna change in 10 years? I don't care. It's 20 years. And obviously, the land has not been disturbed. That water table should not change. That's why, that's why you do a soil.
When you do a bottom hole.
Yep.
You call for the bottom hole inspection.
Yep.
Isn't that the same thing as a deep hole almost?
Not really.
When you're calling it, you check if this.
Depends how deep hole, the hole is.
The inspectors really, that's what he's checking for. When you get to that, to the C layer, he wants to make sure, wait a minute, this doesn't, this is more loomy, sandy loom or loomy sand.
But the engineer should be logging this. A deep hole should be checked by the engineer, not by the town. Because the engineer is liable for the, for the, for the plans.
Will you, the engineer, yes, but the engine, the inspector is the check and balance.
Yep.
Is to verify.
Well, he could be there too.
Yeah.
When you do a bottom hole.
I think Todd has.
So why, why do you need a deep hole?
Well, again, it's just to confirm things haven't changed, but we have done this in the past where we've allowed the deep hole to be done at the time of the open hole inspection. So you're not going out to dig one little hole and then leaving and then coming back three months later. It can be done at the same time.
Well, you're saying 10 years.
No, I'm saying if right now, you've got this piece of property, we don't go in today, dig that hole, and then three weeks later, you're going in and start digging the septic, that we can start digging the septic hole and do the confirmatory hole at the same time.
We're talking anything over 10 years, right?
Yeah.
Over, over 10 years. When you go dig, you, like, like you had mentioned, and that's what I was saying. When you go dig the deep hole and they do the bottom inspection, that's when you can just verify things are not, haven't changed. I've actually seen myself, I've gone to a field and say, wow, that looks totally different from what they approved back in the day.
Then you should take that up, you should take that up with the engineer.
And that's what we did. We stopped it right then and there. But for yourself as an installer, wouldn't you wanna know right, just to get going? Or would you wanna hold up, call the, call the engineer? Do you know what I'm trying to say?
Not really.
Well, if you got your machine there, and it's gonna take five, 10 minutes to dig another deep hole, and just to be sure, to be on the safe side. You know, I don't see.
I don't think you put enough trust in engineer, engineers. That's what I think. You don't put enough trust in the engineer who has to certify that septic system is gonna work.
Well, engineers could make mistakes also.
We're talking something that's over 10 years. That's the thing.
Yeah.
So you're not gonna come across that much, but when you do, you wanna verify that that's accurate. That's my experience. Have you dealt with something that you've gone off, they've held off on a plan for over 10 years?
I got a couple pieces of property right now that have been perked over 10 years.
Yeah. You wanna make sure that's correct, right?
Once the engineer designs it, I have got no design on them. Once the, once the engineer designs it, it's his baby.
Yeah, and we wanna make sure that.
Well, he's gonna, he's gonna do his inspections. He's gonna do a bottom hole inspection, right?
He's gonna do, yeah. The inspector's gonna do.
Yeah, and if you see something, something different, he's gonna say then.
I think this is pretty much consistent from what I've seen in other towns, so that's why I was fine with it.
I haven't seen it. I've been, I've been installing a long time. That's all I got to say.
A lot of towns also have limits that the perks are only good for three years, or five years, or 10 years. We're allow, still allowing the perk test to be good forever, so.
Most towns are.
No, most of them have limits on the length of the perk test.
I've never run across it. That's all I have to say.
With the other ones tied, are you all right with the other ones?
I'm sorry, but we closed the hearing already. I just.
I appreciate it. I appreciate it. Let me speak. All right, thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
I think Stacy has to go, so I don't know if we wanna do her report now.
Are you gonna leave? Okay, we'll skip down to reports.
One thing I have is the new flu. The newest report is they're shutting down any shows, any kind of trade of poultry or turkey or how, whatever you wanna call it. The only way you can get rid of chickens or have them in a place altogether is at the slaughterhouse because they're only for food. So they've shut down everything except for slaughterhouses at this point.
That's the second pandemic.
Yeah.
I'm telling you that.
That's why eggs are so expensive now.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't go on food, so that's a good thing, but it's something to watch. I haven't had an update this week. This is last week's update.
Okay, that's about it?
About it.
Thank you.
Haven't, while, while we got you here, I haven't heard anything about rodents in the village, have you? Vermin?
Yes. We did receive a complaint, I guess it was about a week ago, or the Thursday, the week before. And so both Stacy and I have started increasing our drive-throughs to try and see if we can identify a location. So, yeah, we're gonna start.
Same general area, or?
Yeah, but like over by a street or two, but, so, yeah, we've started to look into it. We wanted to see if Nicole wanted to help us, but.
Okay.
Yes, they're now doing sidewalks and building up over there, so I wonder if that's why we're seeing the increase again.
Could be.
But it is, it's.
There's construction going on, yeah.
But we are actively looking into it.
Okay.
Not necessarily aggressively at this point in time, but it's, it's on our attention level, so.
A lot of complaints are just.
Just one so far, but apparently that person was speaking 'cause somebody else didn't want to, so.
Okay.
But they have been seeing the neighborhood again.
Stacy, do you wanna remind us of the rabies clinic?
Oh, yes, I have a rabies clinic, May 21st, from 3 to 4 at the animal shelter. The town clerk will be there to register dogs if you're not registered. And it's not just a town thing. If people from out of town wanna come, we're very welcome. Dogs and cats. I suppose brown fur, they could, they could do a rabies vaccine too, but.
Is it the three-year one? I'm sorry.
No, it is the same vaccine for whether it's a one-year or a three-year vaccine. What makes it a three-year vaccine is that you've had a two-years vaccine. That first vaccine will always be a year vaccine. From then on, you will always get a three-year vaccine.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
They've changed, they've changed the regulation. So once you have that base vaccine, that will be a one-year vaccine. And then after that, it will always be a three-year vaccine, even if it's over given.
That's what I gotta check, right?
If you're coming and you think you need a three-year vaccine 'cause you've already had a thing, make sure you bring a rabies certificate so they can prove that you've had a rabies vaccine.
So you don't have to get the three-year within the one year?
Not anymore.
Okay, Tony?
That's my question. When did it change?
It, three years ago, four years ago?
My dad always told me that if one year has lapsed, you gotta go back to that one year.
I'm dealing, no, I know. That's how I was, when I was in the veterinary business, that's how it was, was. But I'm dealing with, I got a cat quarantine that was vaccinated five years ago. Then it was stayed, I don't know, feway, and is considered vaccinated. So all these were boosted in a forty highway quarantine set of, 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 isolation because it's considered vaccinated, even though it's lapsed.
What was the time again?
Any other question?
Three to four.
Three to four.
It's on our website if anybody wants to look for further information. I believe the selectmen have it posted over there, too. Thank you, Stacy.
Okay, I'm gonna stick with the reports. If Nicole, you all set to give yours?
Yeah, I think it's about last week, so I don't really have a whole lot to say other than I had the webinar on Monday with DPH, and they had talked about, the media's kinda talking about COVID pickup, some new variants which we're always gonna see. They don't have any concerns at this time because this is what we're gonna continue to see. Cases have been around average last two weeks, five cases. I don't really have anything else in that.
Okay.
Hope yours.
I don't have any other updates from last week, yeah. I am, I'm part of the Mass Public Health Nurse Association, so I'll have my first in-person meeting next week for me. Um, for me, we're going to talk about ticks and lyme disease, so maybe else.
And we're going to be getting her into the Webby OC, which is our state emergency thing. Matt Tanis was always the one that went in and kept an update for us, but we're going to get her in and up to speed on that. But we had to get COVID under control before we dumped something new on her, so, but she's ready for it now, so we'll.
Good.
Be getting her up to speed on that.
Okay, that sounds good. You have anything to report?
Uh, I do. Simple recycling, and again, we may further this at another meeting. They are, we were notified, what, today, that they are changing their plan. They are no longer wanting to provide bags. They are no longer going to drive a route. What's going to happen is you are going to have to call them to come pick it up at your house, and they just want it on your front stairs. So it's a little bit different. We got to find out some more information. But it doesn't seem like it's necessarily the best fit, since we've had the program for four years and it's been working really well. I'd rather not change it, but we're going to be reaching out to them to get some more answers out of them, so.
Yeah, they had mentioned a lot of towns were going that way anyway, right, because of the volume that was getting put out, so they, um, went with calling. Are they still picking at the transfer station?
They haven't been in a couple weeks, but they're supposed to be going there. So, yeah, we could do something like that, and again, we'll get into this when it's on the agenda. But that we may have a drop-off location or whatever kind of thing, that could be a possibility, but, yeah. Well, we, we got to look into it a little bit more before I can present. And household hazardous waste day. Going to make me talk?
Yes.
Get a day?
We're struggling to get dates, uh, but one company did reach out to us and.
We, excuse me, we do have a couple of dates. The problem is they're July and August, through the hottest part of the summer. The next available date was November, I think it was the 12th, and it was the long weekend. So we weren't sure if that was a busy weekend, if people weren't going to. So he just texted me those dates available, and it is just one company. The other companies there actually having, like, they set up a site in.
Braintree.
Braintree, and you had to bring it there.
So we would collect it and bring it all up there.
So that wasn't a viable option. So we only have one, and he didn't give me any pricing. He just gave me dates. So I'm not sure. We need to talk to the town administrator. Can we even enter into a contract with them? But he did say I had to get back to him by the middle, uh, beginning of next week that the dates would not be gone.
How many, uh, requests did you send out? Three, four?
That was four this year. Because wasn't there another company that told us they wanted to do it?
Yes, but that company got back and said they weren't, it was more than they could handle, so.
I think we should, well, as long as we put out the correct amount of.
We do have all the documentation on the bid requests.
Only one replied, if the price is right.
Well, one replied they weren't doing anything this year. They were already overwhelmed. They weren't making any other appointments.
Nothing from Clean Harbors?
Um, Clean Harbors was the one that set up the, um, one of the.
Oh, so they don't do local anymore?
Nope, they've totally changed their program.
Okay.
So this one was A, B, C.
So how does anybody feel about having a household hazardous waste day in July or August?
August is not as hard as July.
So the end of August maybe?
It really depends what day, the weather is.
What are the dates?
They were every Saturday in July and August.
They're open?
And then, say, the long weekend, a Veterans Day weekend, uh, and it's year into fall, so fall sports and everything. I, I, I would think the end of August might be a better date, but.
Take and set up by eight and go eight to 12.
It was July 9th, July 23rd, July 30th, August 13th, August 27th. Then you jump to November 12th.
Yeah.
Then we're into December, the 3rd, the 10th, and the 17th.
August 27th?
August 27th.
Is, is that Labor Day weekend, though? Did you check?
No, it's always the first weekend in September.
August 27th wouldn't be too bad.
That's right, yeah. I was thinking the Monday.
What did we do last time? Wasn't it like nine to one?
It's whatever time they want to do, though. It's.
Yeah.
Well, we can look into that date, see if we can get some prices, find out if we can enter into a contract.
Labor Day, September 5th. So we got ways.
So we're clear?
Yeah, nine to one, we're up, yes, Jim.
Sometimes the kids go back to school after the holiday and then on the week before.
Sometimes it's the week.
September normally.
Though lately, if some of them are before. This would still be before the kids go back to school, so.
Well, let's try to get some prices from them and.
Actually, yeah, it's Saturday before Labor Day. Before, yeah, so, well, more than enough time, I think.
Okay, we'll see what we can line up.
Take and do an eight to 12 even, that would be great.
So August 27th? It's a date you're interested in?
Yes.
Yeah, that would be fine. Okay.
Um, we also got Mass DEP as part of the whole retrack when we report our trash and all the rest of it. We apply for grants every year, and we get points for the different programs we're running, like the textile recycling, swap shed, um, that kind of stuff. That also gets us grant money. But because we get grant money every year from the program, DEP is sending us out a, uh, what is it? It's some kind of master municipal agreement, uh, for the program. So basically, it's going to cover seven years, and it basically is saying that us as the town is willing to accept the money. So instead of every year, you have to sign a contract, it's just, it's like a seven-year contract. So we need to sign it in order to keep doing it, which I don't think is an issue. It's the question is, should the Board of Health be signing it, or should the Board of Health, uh, Board of Selectmen be signing it? As the authorized signatory name on the legally binding contract between the town and DEP. So I'm personally thinking it should be the, the selectman, but I wanted to hear what the board had to say before we furthered the discussion.
The way I read it, and there's a page on there on suggested, suggested signatories. At minimum, I think it should be the town administrator, uh, or the Board of Selectmen, or they're designated. I don't know if the others have read it yet, but.
Yeah, I don't know if he sent it to everybody, but. See, it's a contract just to authorize us to be allowed to get money over the next seven years. But, um, that's the agreement.
Yeah, typically, before you sign any kind of contract at all, town administrator reviews everything. And then he, during his report, typically would, would, um, provide that information to the selectman.
So again, before we went up the ladder, we wanted to make sure everybody's on board with us doing that, so. If somebody thought something different, so. We have to, like, do something, sign it, so there's, there's plenty of time to work it out.
My thought was if we were an elected board, I would say, yes, we could sign it, but since we're only an appointed board.
Mm-hmm.
I would say.
I think, you know.
The administrator.
Yeah.
And then let him, did he look at this at all?
Yes, I've seen it.
Yeah, then I.
I want you guys to see it first before I load it up the room. All right, that's all I have for agent reports. Oh, sorry, perk test is getting very busy. Right now, I'm running about two a week, which is a lot, so. Yeah, we had a whole lot of plans come in. Um, storm art continues to keep coming. Um, doesn't seem no one to stop, so. Yep, there you go.
Mr. Agar, what do you have for us?
Nothing much related, but thank you for asking.
Okay. That concludes our inspectors' reports. We're going to move on to health agent, item 5E, I believe it is. Review discussion act, health agent job description and duties. Uh, we met with the Board of Selectmen, I think it was last week.
In executive session.
In executive session, yes, and, uh, we came to the decision that, um, or the conclusion or an agreement between the Board of Health and the Board of Selectmen that, uh, the whole encompassed, the whole encompassing Board of Health duties and responsibilities and should be reviewed. And before we can make a determination, uh, because some of this, some of the duties could maybe go to the, our emergency management director, some could go to highways, some may go somewhere else, or they may all stay with us. We don't know yet. For now, uh, we're going with the, and I think we've said this last meeting, status quo of as far as any wages or job descriptions until we have an opportunity to review it, uh, further with the Board of Selectmen, so. That's where we're at. Basically, we're, we're at a standstill with it. And hopefully, we'll make some progress in the next few months for fiscal year '24. So, Mr. Haldes, you want to say anything about our meeting?
Just a couple of things. Uh, Mr. Mullin is on vacation next week, so it'll be a couple of weeks before we revisit this. Mr. Pacheco is representing the Board of Selectmen in discussions. And our last meeting went very well, so I'm confident we could put something.
It did, yes.
It, it did extremely well.
I do agree with Mr. Dunne that maybe one of his responsibilities should be assigned to one of the other departments.
Yeah, we have, uh, this is quite a bit of work. There, there's no, and I think everybody's beginning to realize it, with or without a pandemic. Pandemic just makes it worse. But there's something new every, every month, every day, something happens. You never know, so.
The regulations are getting steep, but it's.
But I, I think you'll get there. I, uh, you know, I've been involved with this now for a few years, and I think, um, I look at the people that are coming on or will be coming on, and I think are going to be very successful moving forward in reaching the goals that we want to reach, so. And I wish everybody a bunch of luck. Because I got 15 days left. No, I'll always be there to help, so. I'm not totally going away. All right, um, going on to 5F, review discussion act, combined sewer overflow regulation.
Speaking of new regulations for the Board of Health, I brought this up at the last meeting. This is, uh, the city of Taunton has a sewer system that also takes some drainage water and, you know, from, from rain. And when the system can't handle it, they will let some either raw or slightly treated sewage run into the Taunton River. The new regulation that just went into effect requires that notification has to go out to everybody downstream. So that means the town of Dayton will have to use Code Red to do an all-call to every resident of Dayton to tell them, don't touch the river and the, the water in the Taunton River for the next 48 hours. We also have to go down to every public access point on the river and put up signage saying the same thing. So we have to work out, the city of Taunton's supposed to be reaching out to us to come up with some of the language for the signs and the Code Red notification. And we got to go over with the Highway Department on where we're going to put the signs and, and sort all that out, so. That just came out, and by like May 1st, I think, or something like that, the city of Taunton is supposed to have their stuff done, and like by June 1st, we're supposed to do our part, so. But it's, it's just rolling out now, so.
Okay.
Who, who regulates that? Is it DEP or EPA or?
It is DEP.
So, because from my understanding, I did some training for when it came to sewer plants. And they need a certain kind of format, I forget what it is, to discharge. I always thought they would be fined if they discharged like that. They have to have a real plan, not, not just notify people that the water's polluted.
That's the plan.
Well, but they're still in the IA or whatever they call it, where they're trying to eliminate all of this. And, but it takes time and, and effort and money, um, to do that, and they are working towards it, so. But they're not there yet. And it's only one of their discharges from the city of Taunton. There's another one that's not, so this one is, so.
Yes, selectmen hall.
Time is right. Is the town of Dayton receiving any compensation as a result of the impact of Taunton's problem?
Do you ask? Talked about that before.
Yeah, the answer is no. The state said they are not doing any funding as a result of this.
But I even asked, like, we talked about putting signs up and this and that, and I said, is town paying for these signs?
Mm-hmm.
Are they helping us with this, or do we just?
Well, again, we haven't talked to Taunton yet, um, but there's a lot of towns downstream of Taunton and a lot of public access points. So, um, don't know, but the state was not putting any money behind their duties that they were throwing out at everybody. Similar to a lot of other things, but.
Tony, it'll be like swimming in the Taunton River in 1960 after we worked all day on the farm.
Todd, do you know how that affects the water treatment plant?
Again, they're, they're just going to have to be sending out notifications. Again, they're supposed to be cleaning up the sewage as time goes on, and they've been getting better at it, but it takes time to separate the sewer lines from the drain lines. But no, they're the ones that are going to have to notify the Board of Health, and then we have to send out the notification to the town. But I'll have more information. I thought I was going to have it by this meeting, but apparently it'll be next meeting, so.
All set? Thank you. Okay, moving on to item 5G. Review discussion act amendments two and mailing of recycling flyer. Uh, last time we mailed the flyer out was in 2020. The cost at the time for preparation, printing, and mailing was $1,379. If anybody wants a copy of what we have, your input's welcome. I got it up here. Few things have changed since we last mailed this out. We have 2,000 in our communications budget in account 433, which is the, the trash and recycling, the solid waste stuff. I, I felt, uh, it's already getting a little late in the year. I just wonder now whether we should wait and put this out in, um, for fiscal, for calendar year '24.
Well.
Now, what are we in? Calendar year '23?
Yes, so we were kicking this around a little bit in the office today. If the pink bag program is changing and it's coming to an end or whatever next month, we may have to get out a mailing just to notify people of that, so we could maybe do one mailing of all on the same. You know, and just include everything, like the mattress thing or propane tanks or whatever, and just throw all of it in there at once.
Yeah, even the hazardous.
Yeah, because we don't have mattresses on tonight.
Yeah, we might have a hazardous waste day by then, so it might be a lot of information.
One, one big thing.
That we'll have in June.
Yeah, probably.
And that would just really go through.
We have to update the schedule. We have to update, uh, shops pricing, uh, the schedule, the contact info, and meeting dates.
Yeah.
That's all on the first page. The only question I have now, and it's for us to think about, do we want to come out in May or June with something that's already six months old, or wait until calendar year '23?
Yeah, I, I would, I would recommend we do it for July 1st. This way, you have all the new members. Because right now, it's myself, Laurie's on here.
Oh, yeah.
Things should be changed. We're going to have a whole different staff.
Well, that would be good to do it on July 1st.
And then this way, you'll know exactly when the hazardous waste day is.
Yeah, we just need to pay for it with fiscal year '22 money, I think is what you're.
Yeah, there's.
Yeah, you could.
That would be good, because we have the money there.
You have it set up, and then you, you can receive it already and then mail it out July 1st.
Well, I'll tell you what we can do is we can stop putting the information together that we have, reach out to the company, find out what the price is going to be, and we can come back to you guys in May and say, here, here's what we got. And we can add more information and even at the June meeting and make the vote in June or whatever to send it out, so. But it's, it's something that I think we're going to need to do soon.
I think he already, he must have the setup still there from when we did it before, I'm sure.
Yep.
So there wouldn't be a whole lot of, just a few amendments on, on dates and people.
Because all the holidays, the, the, not all of them, but.
So.
Patriot's Day is different.
Yeah, I would suggest that you talk about mattresses and all that other stuff at the June meeting. And, because we don't know if we're going to accept mattresses or not yet, and that's effective November 1, 2022. We may want to put on there that we're not going to accept mattresses anymore. That's a, that's a big discussion in itself, you know, what we're going to do with them things. And food waste, we don't have any, I don't know how many people put food waste in their trash still, but that's getting banned also. And the, the new textile thing. So we have some changes, but I think we should be looking at that next, next June meeting.
And I know we also, it's not on the agenda, but we talked about doing that recycling audit, where we see how much is, is contamination in recycling, but we delayed that because of COVID, because the numbers were all out of skew, so. We got to get back on the track that we were on before COVID, so.
Okay. Whatever, you still have time to decide for a July mailing anyway, I think.
Excuse me, the gentleman with the household hazardous waste day just responded. He said he'll send us a quote on that price to begin, on that date.
Okay.
For the beginning.
But he reserved the date.
He reserved the date, yes.
All right.
So efficient.
You got to win this.
Been a long day, Roz.
Moving on to 5H. Bebeu Discuss an Act to Reorganize the Board. As everybody knows by now, I'm sure, we're leaving at the end of April. We're doing interviews to get somebody on board for May 1st, and Mr. Bonanno will be leaving at the end of June. So in the interview process, we hope to pick a couple of people that will want, want to fill on May 1st and want to start on July 1st. Mrs. Katavia, I, I think is going to be a tremendous asset to this board. It's already been hardworking, doing some of the filing and data input and quick learner.
Trying to keep up with you.
Yeah, all right. So, and I'm sure we have a, we have a couple of good applicants. I, I think, I think it's going to be a great board going forward. You know, I, I think it'll be a pretty smooth transition into moving into the new members on the board, so. I don't want to get into why I'm leaving, but somebody told me a few times over there. He said, you'll know when it's time. And I come to the realization I'm going to start a new career doing something. I'm 74 now, and I've been involved with town government for 21 years. So on a part-time basis, since 1978. It was when I first started, 78 through 83, then I became a union president for 22 years in the post office. And when I got done with that, I decided to move on into town government where I could continue to help people and represent people, and here I am, so. I figured it was time, so, you know, I'm going to miss everybody, for sure. Yes, even you. So, anyway, let's reorganize.
But we know you'll be around.
Yeah, I'm always there.
We hope so.
Okay, you want to go bottom to top, or we're going to have to reorganize again?
So I'll make a motion to nominate Barbara Katavia as chairwoman, chairperson.
Okay. I'll step down second of motion. Do you accept?
Point of order.
Any choices?
Point of order.
Yes.
Can we have discussion before you go?
Oh, yes.
Please.
Well, I'm going to have discussion right now.
Do I have to, for the record, say who I am?
No.
I went at home. On behalf of the members of the Board of Selectmen, I would like to take this opportunity to thank you, Mr. Piers, for your dedicated and devoted service to the town of Dayton, as you mentioned, for over 21 years. I know you have served three terms as a member of the Board of Selectmen. You've served with great honor the Board of Health, both during your time as a selectman and once they divided. I can't imagine the hours you put in doing both. It's a wise decision to split the two. Also, your time on FinCom, and I believe the planning board as well.
Planning board, CPC, Bylaw Committee, 40B Committee, and I think that was it.
I personally have found you to be a very caring and kind town official. And you've shown a great deal of love and respect for the people of Dayton, and I want to thank you for like your service.
Thank you.
So it's nice to hear that you listened to me through the years. With that said, I want to tell you that, for those of you at home that don't know, Tom hired me way back when. And although I, I thought I would love it here, I had no idea how much I love working in Dayton. And as you know, you were a big part of that, because initially, I wasn't sure I wanted to be in Dayton, and you made damn sure that I stayed here, and I appreciate you for that. I've learned a lot from you through the years. I've been inspired by you through the years. And the fact that you come to terms and know that this is the time, I can't tell you how much I respect and appreciate that, so. With that said, I had this made for you.
Oh, my God.
We, your closest coworkers are all behind it. And it says, presented to Thomas Piers, wishing you the best of retirement. We appreciate your lifetime of dedication and service to the people of Dayton.
Isn't that beautiful?
Oh, my God, it's nice.
Thank you. You'll be leaving too.
Yeah, no, you're going to be sadly missed.
I'll be in touch. Everybody can't see it. This was it. It's gorgeous.
It is nice.
Give me a smile. You're leaving. You should be excited.
Well, that's, well, thank you, everybody. We, I had mixed emotions as I went through this, but I finally decided it was, it was time to go. And I'm going to make square ol' nest for, for Germina, Germina's wife.
I see, I want to come by, cut my grass once in a while.
But, all right. So we had discussion. I, I would recommend that we leave it at this for now, and I'll just be the member and, well. How about, you know, the chairman? So we need a nomination for clerk.
Was it voted? It was discussed before you voted? So there's a motion on the floor.
We discussed. We'll vote.
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor of Barbara Katavia as Chairman of Board of Health?
Aye.
I'll step down and I it, and you're accepting, correct? All right, welcome.
Thank you.
I will. I don't have a choice. Thank you all.
Be there, well, I didn't think you could do it.
Thank you all for giving me the life jacket.
So Kevin's still the clerk right now, right?
Yeah, we'll leave him as a clerk. I'll be a member, and you'll have to reorganize probably.
Do we have to make a motion for him to as the member? Or just it?
No, I'm just nothing, no.
It just kind of works itself out like that?
Yeah, you're only a member until you get something else, so, yeah.
Okay.
What?
We have, Tony, a couple of things left on it.
You're in charge of the meeting now.
Oh, no.
Pass through the gavel, too. There you go.
No, you didn't tell me this.
Go ahead, you can sit there.
Why don't you close out the meeting one last time?
No, go ahead.
I'm not sure what to do, Tom.
Just go to the next item on the agenda.
Yes, I think it's eight, we're on, um.
Oh, Tommy, you didn't warn me of this. You guys always doing this to me.
You missed 5I.
Yeah, number eight.
Did you plan this?
5I, 5I. We're still on 5I.
Okay, so what do I say? Tell me. My coach.
Okay, there is no 5I. There's, there was nothing else, so we did six. You're going to do public input, number seven.
I'm so used to you saying it.
Well, then you can say it.
Is there any public input?
Is there any public input on, which one are we on? Would you say seven?
Seven.
Oh, it's, yeah. Is there any public input? Oh, you guys are embarrassing me.
Okay, so you move on.
Okay, so we'll move on to number eight, correspondence. Waste ban on mattresses and textiles.
So as of November 1st, 2022, the state has banned all mattresses and textiles from trash, so it needs to come out. Dayton thankfully has been ahead of the game with the Pink Bag Program for four years, so we didn't have to worry about that, but as of the email today, we are now going to have to deal with how that's going to change. Mattresses, the discussion is going to be, what do we want to do with them? We can recycle them, which means we have to have a closed container to put them in.
You're driving me crazy.
Or we can send people to other locations to dispose of their mattresses, places that take them for recycling. We did just put in at the last meeting, or whatever it was, the Capital Outlay Committee, the $12,000 on the warrant for, for buying recycling bin, or trash bin, was it, roll-off containers for the transfer station, so. Obviously, we could use one of those, the mattresses, if that's where we want to go down, and it's a discussion. I think Tom Ferry may need to be involved in this discussion also, and we've already talked about inviting him to the next meeting, so we could add that to the list of things to talk about with him, which would include the transfer station attendant mattresses, pink bags, and the combined sewer overflow, since he's involved in all of those.
Quick question. If we decide not to accept the mattresses, where, where would somebody go?
There are some places around that do take them, and we have to look into that. I know there's one in, did we say New Bedford?
Yes.
New Bedford. I expect with this mattress ban, there's going to be more places that'll pop up that'll take them for recycling purposes, but as of this point in time, there's not a lot of places around.
I got to tell you, if we do take them, it's going to be a high-priced tag for acceptance.
And right now, it's 15, we charge, we charge $15 for a mattress, so, and it's going to be far more than that to get rid of it, so.
I was part of a program, the mattress program, in another town, and I would have to say it was brutal, because some of the mattresses that we thought were clean, they would say, oh, this is not clean. And then we bought one of these, well, they gave us one of these large containers, and they would constantly call me, have you filled it up yet? And I was like, I have four mattresses. And I had it for almost a year. And they, what about now? Because they were renting it at the time. It was like a trial program. They were paying someone to just, to have it on our site. And I was like, I can't fill this thing. And even the ones I think I can fill, you're saying are dirty or contaminated. It was not worth it for, for me.
And I don't know, and I don't think anybody in this room is saying we should or we shouldn't. It's a matter of, we need to look into it a little bit more, and I think, like I say, it's, it's going to be a difficult decision to make, which is part of the reason why this board requested the Selectmen form a solid waste committee, because these are some bigger picture type discussions, just like the propane tanks when we decided to stop taking them.
Can I say a few words? So I, I just have two comments to make regarding this. First, if we decide not to take them, I think we need to educate the public as to where they can take them. The second is, if we do decide to take them, the full burden of the cost of getting rid of those needs to be borne by the person dropping off the mattress. The days of having all the taxpayers pay for something like rubbish removal for specific items such as this are over. We can't do that anymore. The fiscal status that we're in, each person who generates the trash, in this case, a mattress, needs to bear the cost to get rid of that. So whatever that cost is, if it's $100, it's $100. That's how we have to deal with this. We can't all be, be responsible for the person who generates it.
That's a good point.
It may be close to 100.
I think it will.
Yeah.
We have one other piece of correspondence, unless there's more that anybody wanted to say about the mattresses? Okay. So Parking Recreation Commission sent out an announcement that they are having the Firecracker Festival for the second year behind Town Hall, and they were inviting all town committees and commissions to participate. So it would be an opportunity for us to have a table and tell people what we do, and, you know, hand out information about stuff if we are so desired. It doesn't, it's, the event is on July 9th at 1:00 in the afternoon, so. Don't know if anybody's interested in promoting anything or whatever. Obviously, it would take somebody to be there. We can't just set up a table and leave it, so. Something to think about. Again, it's July 9th, so. Think about it, and we can talk about it more at the next meeting, because we do have information we can get out there. I know Mrs. Goulart is planning on being there with stormwater stuff to hand out, as she always is, and she'll get that word out, but we may have more stuff we need to get out for, for Board of Health. And obviously, it seems like there's more, more information coming faster and furious, or if that's a word, so. It may be something we need to consider.
Okay, any other correspondence? Let's move on to number nine, acceptance of minutes executive sessions, September 9th, 2021, September 30th, 2021, and November 18th, 2021.
So I believe I screwed up last week when Roz wasn't here. I was supposed to have handed everybody these minutes to look at, and I didn't. So you haven't seen them yet.
I don't think anybody's had an opportunity.
Tried to start reading it, but.
To read them totally.
Make a motion to table this?
Well, it's, you guys are just, this motion is just to accept the minutes. So what you're doing is, and Mr. Hull, I'm not sure, I, we haven't actually done this before, but at one of our meetings, the Board of Selectmen accepted the minutes. You're not voting on them, you're just voting to accept.
Like personally accepting them.
Because of executive session.
Oh, perfect.
They'll vote to release them at another time.
Okay, and they would approve them at another time?
So it's accept, approve, and release are three separate actions. So right now, because we can't email them to you, whatever, because then it's like a public document, so you're accepting them.
So to be clear, we're just voting to accept the minutes, then we'll do the.
At a later date, you would be approving them.
All right, you made a motion.
Yeah, Madam Chairwoman, I'll make a motion to accept the meeting, the executive session meeting minutes of the September 9th, 2021, September 30th, 2021, and November 18th, 2021.
I'll second that motion.
Wow, how did that feel?
Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Seeing none, all in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is passed, right?
Any opposed?
Any opposed? Motion is passed.
Abstentions.
Any abstentions? Tom, we haven't talked enough about this.
Do it, break.
We'll make a script. It will be.
I know. I didn't know I was going to take over tonight. This is the part where they throw me overboard. Are we set now for the next one?
I think all we have to do now is adjourn, correct?
Approval of minutes.
And these minutes you were going to table?
Madam Chairwoman, Madam Chairwoman, I got to get used to that.
That's hard.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion to table. I make a motion to table item 10, the meeting minutes of March 10th, 2022.
Second.
Do I do it again?
Motion's made and seconded.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion?
Seeing none, all in favor?
Seeing all in favor?
Seeing no discussion, all in favor?
No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is passed, right?
Sure.
We'll get there, guys.
Aye.
All opposed.
All opposed?
Because you may be opposed to it.
Oh, gosh.
And motion to adjourn?
Second. Same thing.
I know, but I didn't write it down.
I think Tom can give you a little script.
No, I am going to have a script, but he's whispering to me.
Motion's made and seconded.
Motion made and seconded.
To adjourn.
To adjourn.
Any discussion?
Any discussion?
Seeing none, all in favor?
Pardon?
Seeing no, no, all in favor?
See... Oh, boy. Say that again, because this is...
Seeing no discussion, all in favor?
Seeing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed.
Opposed?
You oppose?
No, I'm not opposed.
Okay.
I want to get out of here.
And the motion passes.
I knew you guys were going to throw me over the boat. I knew it.
You're doing great.
Meeting is adjourned. Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, cable.